Welcome to the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 3rd, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Lord, if you could please bless our city. We find ourselves in unprecedented times. I ask you to give not only our city staff, our first responders, and everyone who's responded to this catastrophic event in our city, please give them strength to help us and our community get through this. And also, could you please look after our residents and make sure that they have what they need in order to get through this event? We're all working harder each and every day around the clock, but please, we know with your blood... it's easier. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the floor.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Costin? Here.
Here.
Long?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five, changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Or do I have a motion to adopt as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six is citizens' input time. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name if you wish to participate in citizens' input. Just stand where you are and please state your name. See, a non-citizen's input is now closed. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is seven, new business. We have Resolution 226-22, which is approving extending the state of local emergency which was declared on September 27th, 2022. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, staff, ladies and gentlemen. The existing code of ordinances grants the city manager the authority to declare a local state of emergency for a period of up to seven days. The manager does not have the legal authority to extend that timeframe. We must go back to the city council in order to do that. At the moment, and we can only do that in seven-day increments. At the moment, I'm requesting that council extend the local state of emergency for another seven-day period. However, the manager does have the ability to report back to council that the circumstances no longer warrant a local state of emergency, and then I have the ability to rescind that state of emergency.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
Circumstances, City Manager. So at any time within that seven days that you feel that we do not need this any longer, then you have the power to basically cease the local state of emergency?
The way I understand the ordinance, I do. However, I have to report back to council to advise you of that.
Okay.
I believe the actual language in the ordinance says that I have to certify to the city council.
Madam City Attorney, would you like to elaborate a little further?
And pursuant to this resolution, if we need a state of emergency longer than seven days, longer than the additional seven days, the council may see fit to extend it today, then the council, in this resolution, is authorizing you, Mr. Mayor, to extend it for an additional seven days, well, in seven-day increments. And if at any time you were to declare it for an additional seven days, council has the ability to terminate that earlier than the seven days.
So my question is basically, at some point, do we have to reconvene a council? Whether it's me or the city manager. Say we do it for another seven days, and by Friday we say, okay, we don't need it anymore.
In this resolution, if you extend it for an additional seven days, council can terminate it earlier than that. Because council is the one that's imposing it at this point.
Okay. All right. Is that...
Yeah.
Your understanding, Mr. City Manager?
Um, that is, I have a slightly different interpretation, but I am not an attorney of Mr. Mayor, so I will have to defer to the city attorney.
And I have the ordinances here?
Section...
They're back?
Oh, I do, I have a divorce.
Oh, do you?
Resolution came.
No, the other two ordinances.
All right. While he's reviewing that, council number eight?
Yeah, I think I'm a little confused too, because it says under new business that the mayor has the authorization to make the extension. And I'm hearing that it's council, so I'm just trying to understand.
The council definitely has the ability. They're the ones to extend it. If it needs to be extended, it's clearly council.
Okay, not just the mayor.
Well, what this resolution would be doing is authorizing him, you as the council, would be authorizing the mayor to, if it's needed, for an additional seven days beyond the seven days that you would be approving today, that the state of emergency can only go on for seven-day increments.
Right.
And that's by state law. So if you all see fit to extend it today, well, to extend it beginning tomorrow morning for an additional seven days, you're authorizing the mayor to, if it's needed, to go an additional seven days. You're authorizing him to declare that. And he could, in theory, declare it again. I don't know how long we need a state of emergency. But if he overdeclares, then this overdeclares in that it can terminate earlier than what the seven days he's supposed, council can choose to terminate it. Now conveniently, the... it basically ends at seven days, eight, or two days, so council could do it as early as a six meeting, for example, or a long...
I guess my question, are you the council?
Yes, sir.
My question was, not necessarily as far as the extension. I kind of understood that resolution. My question is, within that seven-day period, we unified command determines that the state of emergency is no longer needed. Do we have to reconvene the council?
I believe you do.
Yeah.
And this is a time when the city manager and I are not agreeing on the interpretation of the ordinance. If this were still the declaration of emergency that he had declared, I think he does have the ability to terminate that in less than seven days. But once we shift over to the power of the city council, then it takes the power of the city council to do it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. On that, council number Welsh. Go ahead.
No, if that's the case, then I'm going to respectfully request that when city council adopts this resolution, that you grant either the mayor or the manager the authority to rescind the extension of the local state of emergency without calling another meeting of city council.
I mean, for me, that kind of makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
You know, because, and it doesn't matter if it's me or the city manager.
If you granted him the, sorry, the mayor, the ability to extend, then I would request that you also provide him the ability to rescind.
Sure.
Right.
I think that you all could do that.
Okay. Council number Welsh?
What I wanted to touch on was the timeframe of it. Just for being open and transparent, I think maybe we do three extensions by the mayor before the council has to reconvene. We'll have meetings in between there, but it also gives some... It's not the mayor just here signing away.
She said by state laws, every seven days.
Yes, so then we allow the mayor to do three extensions with this resolution instead of unlimited extensions, because then it at least brings us back together again to reconvene and see what's going on in the state of Cape Coral.
Well, my understanding, Madam City Attorney, we're still going to probably have meetings...
Meetings, yeah.
Throughout, regular council meetings throughout this process?
I have not heard anything to the contrary that... I have not...
So I think that we could bring it up at any time in that council room and have that discussion. Okay. Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion with the...
I'll make a motion to...
Did you have a question?
No, no, I was going to make a motion.
To approve Resolution 226-22 and add the language, and somebody may have to help me, where the mayor or the city manager can rescind or extend the time period.
I prefer that you make it very clear. Just give that to the mayor.
Okay. To the mayor, to rescind or extend? Does it have to be...
No, he's got the ability to extend, isn't he?
Yes.
So what he's not saying is that he has the ability to terminate it prior to the seven days, if he deems it no longer necessary. Now remember, if he terminates it, then you're going to be having to come back into session to reinstated.
Right. Is that Beck, Kimberly?
I'm sorry, what?
She's got it. Okay, so that would be my motion then.
Second.
Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, we have a motion in the second on the floor. Could you call the floor, please?
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution, which is item seven B, Resolution 227-22, approving council and all city of Cape Coral boards, commissioning committee, and advisory boards. I'll turn that over to Mr. City Manager.
And I'm going to just take that over to Ms. Brunns, who is the coordinator for all of the various boards in the city.
So, Kimberly Brunns, city clerk. I've added in your package the slide that's on the screen about various board meetings that are coming up. If you're permission, I'd like to go day by day and cancel meetings that aren't related to the incident or city council exactly related, like a cow or a regular. And that would start with, on October 5th, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I was unable to reach a forum, so I can't have that meeting. And the Charter School Authority Governing Board, I spoke with Superintendent Collins today, and she agreed that this meeting can be canceled. The business that she has can be carried into November. On the 12th, we have the Transportation Advisory Commission. That is one of your boards, so I'm asking permission for that to be canceled. The Special South Cape Community Redevelopment Agency meeting, we're asking for that to be canceled. The Youth Council meeting on the 14th, I'm asking for that to be canceled. For this one here, for Lee County Tourist Development, we're waiting to hear from the county. That's just on there for informational purposes. Parks and Rec Advisory Board on the 17th, we're asking for that to be canceled, as well as the Affordable Housing. On Tuesday, the 18th, we have a hearing examiner hearings. Currently, we are unable to add cases to that meeting, so we're asking for that to be canceled. We would keep the committee of the whole. Code compliance is a different matter, so that one I'm not asking you to weigh in on today. The NPO is an outside agency, so I'm not asking for that one. The Pension Workshop, they have agreed to cancel their meeting. They cannot be ready for business. And then, at the end of the month, the Youth Council meeting. We're looking for that to be canceled. Staff is concentrating solely on the reopening of City Hall and getting back to city business and calling in volunteer board members to attend meetings for advisory purposes. It's my, it's our recommendation that we cancel those at this time for the month of October.
And just to clarify, we have a regular Cape Coral City Council meeting scheduled for October 12th and October 26th, and we have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for October 19th. We're going to keep all three of those on the calendar?
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll open up the floor for any discussion or a motion.
Make the motion, cancel.
Any discussion? I have one.
Dolores.
Madam City Attorney.
If we're not, if we're not going to be canceling the code compliance hearing, I do think it would be good to clarify in the resolution that the code compliance hearing on October 20th is not being canceled. Just to make it clear for everybody, so nobody says, oh, I thought that I didn't have to come to my code meeting because...
I'll restate the motion, Mayor. Put it. So I'll restate the motion to cancel all recommended meetings as presented by the clerk, with the exception of the code compliance hearing scheduled for October the 20th at 9:00 a.m.
Is second agree?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Are we... Madam City Clerk?
I just have one statement I'd like to request respectfully. If we determine that the code compliance hearing, through requirements of advertising and getting letters out to the stakeholders, is not physically possible with the closure of City Hall and various activation efforts, can the city clerk have permission to cancel that line when that's determined?
I'll restate the motion to include that piece.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does the second agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we going to reschedule? I know the Parks and Rec is a quarterly meeting. Are we going to try to put it in November then? Or are we just canceling it until the following meeting, which is three months later, would be my question.
Yeah.
So, if I may, all of the boards that we're canceling, we're going to analyze for, do they need quarterly? Or do they need weekly, or monthly, or biweekly? And make every attempt to obtain a forum and reset dates to November for the ones that aren't reoccurring. That one's a quarterly one, so I would be happy to work toward that.
Okay.
For Parks and Rec.
Any other questions? Okay, we got a motion in the second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the floor.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution 230-22, approving extending the date for required leave use due to the declared emergency. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city currently has a policy through ordinance that essentially requires employees to use that have accrued vacation leave up in excess of a certain amount. And I believe it's 400 or so employee, 400 hours for employees covered by this ordinance. The ordinance states that they have until the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30th, to use their accrued leave over the 400 hours, or they lose it. Because of the emergency situation that presents ourselves, many of those employees were prohibited from using that time since they were all recalled, many of them were recalled to back to work. So what I am requesting is for the city council, consistent with the ordinance, to extend that user-lose time to January 31st of 2023. So that will allow employees the opportunity to use those excess hours before losing it.
Thank you. I'll now open the floor for any discussions or a motion. Madam City Attorney?
Just to clarify, pursuant to the ordinance, you actually, you would actually be extending this to a two-step process. So if they can't use their user-lose in time by September 30th, you're technically, for everybody, extending it to October 31st. Whether they try things or not, you're just extending it to October 31st. For those employees who are unable to use their user-lose in time during that, even during that extended period, for those people, you are extending it all the way until January 31st of 2023. And that's pursuant to the ordinance, that's what the ordinance provides, the two-step process. Everybody gets the additional month. And those people who are unable to use it, which probably will be a lot of people, but in this case will be a lot of people, January 31st.
And I guess we don't know where we may be here in the next couple of months, but I'm sure at any given time, we could come back and revisit this topic. It could need be as well.
Yes, I don't, I don't see us grabbing a lot of time off between now and October 31st, so realistically, it's going to be January 31st. If that.
Right, that's what I said. And we could come back and revisit that again if need be.
We may have to extend it.
Okay. Any other discussions or a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve Resolution 230-22.
All right. Any further discussion? See, a none. We have a motion in second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the floor.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item D, which is Resolution 228-22, and authorize the waiver of permit fees for emergency permits. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have staff, Ben Scatero from Development Services, come up and give you a very quick PowerPoint presentation that I believe is going to cover the next three agenda items, correct?
Yeah, it touches on some way.
Okay, so it touches on those next three agenda items, and I'll turn it over to...
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. What we're working on now in Development Services, and I don't know if this mic is working, but can you hear me? I'm fine, okay. We've been spending the time that was allotted to us in the EOC and also in the office today in the recovery phase right now to work on an emergency permitting procedure. We have broken this down into three categories that I want to share with you. It's modeled predominantly after the one in Lee County, so the contractors and homeowners should be familiar with it, especially those who have worked with it before. But we made a couple of twists. What we're trying to do is maintain the integrity of our system, but also allow homeowners and contractors to do things as quickly and as seamlessly as possible. So what we're stating in the document that we have, we have a staff document that we're going to be preparing for everyone to review. We want everyone to know that owner repairs can be done, but we're enforcing right up front and we're telling people right up front, please use a licensed contractor that is licensed in the state of Florida properly by the state. We already uncovered a couple of scams going on, and we're taking action on that. There's some door hangers from people out of town to do work on tiles, roofs, shingles, cleaning your house, and doing all these things. So, and we've had some citizens actually report those to us in addition to our staff observing that. So we want to make sure that's out there. We're asking for permit fees to be waived for 180 days from the day of the resolution, and that you would have the discretion to extend that. The permit fees would only be for the emergency permits. We will continue to work on the normal permitting procedures with staff. We're going to have a dedicated staff to work on the emergency permits. And then, of course, our dedicated staff, once the activation period is over and the city hall is opened, employees coming to work would go about their normal duties. People on the emergency permitting will focus only on that. We need to do that for a number of reasons. Effective record-keeping and consistency. So that, those are our two main objectives there. And they're in three categories, major, minor, and structural damage. So this is what minor damage looks like. And we can, we have the discretion to include other items in here. We're just giving you some of the highlights. And this is what we're going to be preparing, a document to send out to the public. The CCCIA worked with me on developing this. Bill Johnson was instrumental in helping with this. And they will put it out on their website, as well as the chamber, and then we'll work with Melissa and Maureen to get it out to the public as well. In general, it would cover roof covering, screen enclosures, as you can see, items that are listed up there. What we're asking is that the contractor or the homeowner submit an itemized list of the repairs that need to be made, and that will be our guide to determine whether it's less than $20,000. And that'll be the number-one category, or the A category. The owner will request inspections like they do now, and we're setting up a separate line that's already been established by IT and a separate email, because we're going to be inundated. And we will have staff monitor that. People will be able to leave a message. And we're going to encourage that in the voice message that we have on the phone. In other words, it would say something like, welcome to the Cape Coral Building Division. This is a special hotline number set up for emergency inspections. Please leave your name and number, and we will, or email, and we will contact you as soon as possible. And, and/or address, and then it goes from there. And then we'll be able to get back in touch with the owner or the contractor. Now, we know people are out there already doing work, for whatever reason. Safety, great, we want them to do it. If they're doing it for insurance reasons, great, do it. We're asking people to come in within 30 days after the fact to get a permit. The reason for that is good record-keeping. People are going to need this for their insurance companies. We're going to need it to enter into our system. It really matters, especially if you have a non-conforming structure or if you're in a flood zone. So that's why we're asking them to come in. Will some people not come in? Of course. But we're just offering the opportunity. As more and more time goes by, we think people are going to become familiar with what we're doing, and it's like, yeah, I put a new roof on, or not a new roof, I repaired the roof, but I need to go in and get a permit. If they don't come in after 30 days, I'm still going to take the documentation and put it in our system. So that covers the minor damage. Any questions on this so far? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, just plain English for me, please.
Yes.
I've got roof damage, and my roofer comes out and says, you need a new roof, and they tar it. So within 30 days, he can come get a permit? Or can they go ahead and get started?
No.
What is the procedure? Because 90% of everyone needs roof.
Right. We know we're going to get thousands of those. I'm sorry if I was not clear.
Yeah, just make it like step one, two, and three, please.
Yes. Okay. First of all, this, this is for getting a permit before you do the work.
Do you have to have a permit before you do the work?
We want you to. But if they, if you don't, we want you to come in in 30 days and tell us what you did. And then we'll put it in the file, and we'll work with you on the paperwork. Fortunately, hopefully, the contractor will have the appropriate documentation and give it to us, and then we, we do a permit, and it's done. And you're going to get it over the counter. This permit is designed for people to receive it immediately over the counter, less than $20,000. We're not going to sit there and question you or your contractor on it. So they would get the permit over the counter and do their work. We will catch things in the field in inspections. That's how we're going to police this. We're not going to police it through plan review if it's less than $20,000. The next two are coming up. You're going to see more on this. So to answer your question, if the roof, if the roofing contractor comes in, if this roof has damage, we have to determine whether it's under $20,000 or more than $20,000. $20,000 is essentially the same, but we're going to need to review it. Okay? And we're going to get, we're going to strive for a one-day turnaround time. That's the next slide.
Do we have the staff prepared to handle it?
Yes, and we are going to, we made a request through our logistics section to have additional plan reviewers come in from other communities to help us. And Mr. Hernandez was able to secure services from some former colleagues of his that are in the city of Margate. They came in and provided some help in working on this over the past few days, and we're expecting some of that, some plan reviewers from that city to come. And they're going to be put on this. The beauty of it is, it's quick, it's easy. Here's the paperwork. They know what they're doing. If they're inspectors, they know what they're doing, look from the field. Here it is. You go out and here's the address, and here's the documents, the plans. We don't have to worry about it being an intergov. I didn't get to it yet, but this is all going to be paper. We're going old-school. We think it's going to work much better.
It is.
Right now.
Yeah.
And get it out of the way and deal with it later electronically. We're going to, we're going paper. Each one of these will have a different color. We went out and bought like, I don't know, the whole Office Depot store. We bought the All-Star out, I think, yesterday. And we bought paper and files, we, actually, it was today. We sent one of our employees to Fort Myers to get enough paper to handle this. Major damage is essentially what I just said, but it's $20,000 or greater, and our goal is to have it reviewed in one day. Now, the third one is the one that's much more involved. That's major structural damage. That's where you're going to have to have your plans reviewed, and we will determine that when the documentation is presented to us.
Okay, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, and real quickly, before you do. My only concern with this, quite frankly, and I guess all you're doing is compelling those particular individuals to come in and get a permit, but I can tell you, a tile roof on a 2,500-square-foot house on a new residential home.
Mm-hmm.
Is between 20 and about $26,000.
Mm-hmm.
If it is a tear-off on an existing house, that's usually somewhere between 40 and $45,000. So, on a 2,500-square-foot house. So I just wanted to make sure we understood that because $20,000 is a low threshold, I think, but...
We can raise it.
So maybe we should focus less on the dollar threshold and more on the type of damage being repaired. So this is obviously major damage, right? Whereas this does not include a tile roof or repairing a tile roof, whereas the other one, the other permit category, the minor damage, takes that into account exclusive of the dollar threshold?
We can do that. We can do that.
Because I can tell you, that's under normal circumstances or those values.
Okay.
And I can guarantee you, it's going to probably be higher under these circumstances. So the 20,000 kind of concerns...
So we'll focus on the scope of work rather than the dollar threshold?
Okay. And then Phase Three would be major structural damage. That's going to be important for another item you're going to be discussing in a minute on your agenda.
So that's what my question is. So in the yacht club area particularly, is there a way we can set up a mobile-type command unit for all those people? 99% of the yacht club is over $20,000 structural damage that they're going to deal with FEMA. They're not going to be able to run up here. There's not enough gas for everybody to handle that. Is there a way we can set up a command unit at the yacht club or in the Tony Rotino Center or some area that people can come to? Because it is, it is critical there, and I don't, you know, I know we're not talking about trash at the moment, but I don't know how much longer, everyone's life is on the curb down there. If you haven't been down there, it's a war zone.
I've been down there, of course. All right, so...
So what can we do to get them quicker help? Because there, there's just so many people to be able to come here.
Okay, we could, we could set it up there, and I'll work with the appropriate staff in Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department to set it up. But my recommendation to the council would be that we only have one place like that, and City Hall would be open for normal operations. Of course, if people came in and wanted a temporary permit, we would deal with it at City Hall, but I would ask everyone to go there, not split it up geographically.
Well, I'm only concerned about that area because it is not trying to do districts. It's just, it is the worst hit, and it is...
Yeah.
So if, and maybe just people could get questions asked with an appropriate staff person that can give them correct information rather than call and leave a message.
Okay.
I mean, they're all living out of nothing, you know, so...
So we'll look at possibly hosting a tent there.
That would be...
You'll get a mobile.
Okay.
I think we can set up a tent, maybe two, three days a week or what have you. We'll have to look at the Rotino Center. The main yacht club building has some significant damage to it.
Right, right.
Don't want anybody coming close to that. But I see what you're trying, where you're trying to go, and I think we can get there.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I'm just asking.
We'll figure that out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. All right, so we'll make the appropriate change on the minor and major, and then there's structural, major structural, which is very, as you know, from looking at the wording here, it's very involved, and that's where a contractor's or a licensed engineer or architect is going to have to have documentation. I want you to notice one thing, though, that we're asking for on the permit procedure where it says for major damage on top. We're saying that it can be issued to the contractor or owner-builder if the item, once an itemized list is submitted by a contractor. That is more lenient than what Lee County does. I just want you to be aware of that. Lee County requires that a licensed engineer or an architect do it. We're saying, no, it's acceptable for a contractor, but that's an alternative. If you have a, if you hire a licensed engineer or architect and you're able to work and do it for you, fine, but we don't want to make that happen, make it a requirement, because we don't know if people are, what their businesses look like, if there's people even available to help you, but we know the contractors are going to be available to do it. So we think that that's certainly acceptable. So you really have a choice. You can use an architect, an engineer, but you don't have to. Whereas across the river, you do, unless they change that, so... The same is for the structural damage. You'd have to have that information given to us by a licensed professional, the contractor. That was it on that one, and then we've got another one coming up right after that on the habitable structures, but I think you have to look at the resolution first. I don't have the agenda.
Can we just continue with, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Can we continue with all the presentations?
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
I just think it's easier if you learn all your things as you're doing them.
Okay, all right.
And all you're doing in this one is waiving the permit fee for the emergency permits. You're not going into the details that he's just delineated, and that's for 180 days unless earlier terminated by the council or extended by the council, and that's in the resolution.
Okay, so we have Resolution 228-22. I'll open the floor for any discussions or a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 228-22.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the room.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costas.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Item E, Resolution 229-D22. Approve declaring a habitable structure emergency and waiving requirements for temporary storage containers.
Great. Mr. Mayor and Council, as Dolores just said, you are actually implementing that provision of the Land Development Code, which it calls for you to implement it in the event of a disaster, and we're asking for a waiver on the number of storage containers or pods that can be on sites. Real quickly, another two-page slide. This procedure is outlined in the Land Development Code. It is very lengthy, and it is very involved. We are, and you have to get a permit, and there's a lot of information that has to be shared back and forth with staff. We're asking that, or we're going to ask the residents that come in, we're going to use their structural damage permit if they qualify here for that to meet the terms of this ordinance. Let me just tell you what that means in plain English. This means you could put an RV in your driveway or another structure that is livable. You can bring a tiny house in on wheels or something like that. That's what this section allows, and the building official determines if it's livable or not, and whether your structure that is damaged is uninhabitable or non-livable. That's what this section does. But it is, it is very heavy on some, I think, extraneous regulations. We're going to deal with that later. We're going to, we're going to change it. This is a holdover from the old Land Development Code. You're declaring it now. It requires a permit, and there's issues on time and place and manner requirements. The temporary storage, which is part of this presentation, you can see an example of one there where requiring a permit for it, but we're asking for the fees to be waived, of course. And right now, the ordinance says you can have one on there for seven and two for 30, and we're asking to waive the limitations on the number of temporary storage and waive the permit requirement. One of the things that's going to be tricky, as you probably already know from this and the one I just showed you on the habitable structures, based on past experience and maybe some others here have different experiences in other communities, this is my fifth hurricane or major flood that I've been involved in in Florida. About two months goes by, that's when we're going to start getting calls to code enforcement, just as a rule of thumb. But we want to give people relief, and we want people to be able to have a habitable structure and place to keep their belongings, and that's why we're bringing this to you. So the decision is yours. The code allows us to do this, but we're asking you to make some changes to it temporarily.
For 180 days, correct?
Yes, for 180 days.
Could you go back to the slide prior to that?
Sorry, Kim.
That's storage containers. The one before that was for...
Is the habitable structures.
Habitable structures.
Yeah.
That's the one I was trying to get to. And the reason...
The one right before it.
You may be able to answer it, but I know we talked about waiving the permit fees for the storage facilities. Either I missed it or I didn't hear that. Do we have to have a permit?
Not that one. The other one, Kim, it's the second one.
Resolution, excuse me, the resolution for the temporary habitable structures?
Yeah.
All you're doing is declaring...
It requires a permit.
Yeah, permit.
And you're not waiving the permit requirements in the resolution that you have before you...
So we're not, we're not waiving the fees?
Not the temporary habitable...
Wait a minute.
For the temporary habitable structure, for the temporary habitable structure, all you're doing is declaring the temporary habitable structure emergency, which gives people the ability to have these habitable structures at their sites. But all of the permit requirements that are identified in 5.9.9 of the LDCs are still remaining in effect. They are not being waived. Where you are waiving pretty much everything is for the, in the resolution you have before you, is with regard to the temporary storage containers. Because currently, you need a permit and you need, there's a limitation on the number and the timeframe in which these things can be out there. In this resolution, for the temporary storage containers, you are waiving the time, the, have a number, the permit, all of that. Now bear in mind, the way this is written is if you wait until day number 179 from the date that you, council adopts this resolution, the way it's currently written, if you wait till day 179 to put your storage container on your property, that storage container is only going to be able to be there for one day.
Right.
Unless council has extended this, the terms of this resolution further. But they're being treated differently in that way between the temporary habitable structure and the temporary storage containers.
So my question was, do you have to pay a fee for your permit for a temporary habitable structure?
No, you do not.
That's all I...
So you need a permit.
Does that include people bringing their RVs in, and they can put them in their driveway? We don't have to get a permit? They can stay there for 30 days?
You have to get a permit.
Okay. Are they going to have to go online to get a permit?
No. This is all, this whole...
Is coming here.
Operation is done on paper.
Okay, and then can that be at the yacht club as well?
Yes.
Because all those people are already... And what are we doing with everybody who's already brought their RVs and stuff and haven't gotten a permit and are just there trying to live?
Case by case, we'll ask them to come in within 30 days. Our code enforcement officers are going to be driving around all over the place trying to assist people, as well as our building inspectors. We'll ask them, we'll say, maybe we'll just bring it, we'll have them in the truck.
Just bring them with you.
Hand it to them.
I just don't want people to say, "Oh, I didn't get a permit, so I have to move."
We'll have them fill it out and maybe take it right back. We'll make it easy on them, and we can handle it at the temporary location at the yacht club and explain to them what the rules and regulations are on it. The main type of structure that we believe will be placed on property is an RV.
That's where people are living, yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right.
And they're already doing it because I'm...
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said it's an after the fact. So even if you give them to all of us, and we can go in our districts and just, you know, hand them out to people and say, "Here, fill out this form, I'll take it with me, and at least we know you have your RV on site." I mean, I don't know why we really need to know, but...
There's, there's going to be a lot of discretion here. We're going to work with people.
I mean, why, okay, because I mean, why do we need to know?
Well, there's an answer, I'm sorry, sorry.
Tracking purposes or reporting to FEMA and so forth.
Damage, yeah, on the structure.
If council wants to waive the permit requirements and the time, place, and manner for the temporary habitable structures, as well as for the temporary storage containers, then we need to, the motion needs to be to approve with an amendment in this resolution. Because this resolution is only doing those waivers, I don't mean to repeat myself, but it's only doing those waivers for the temporary storage containers. It is not waiving the requirements of 5.9.9 for the temporary habitable structures. If you want to do that, we'll put in the same language for the temporary habitable structures as for the...
Okay, so what's the language?
It's basically the same language as for the temporary storage containers. It will, it'll fundamentally be that. We can do that, that's what council wants.
Okay, just worry about that. Okay, I'll make that motion when we're ready.
Any other discussion on that topic?
No questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know why, if it is important to have permit fees, why that is.
The main reason is to track, because we're looking at different types of damage, and people may need that to give to their insurance companies, and we may have to provide that at a later date to FEMA. So we would have a record of the damage in our community, and that's why you saw some of them with $20,000 or $40,000, but that's not a major issue. Minor structural damage and major are the two, the two categories that we'd like to focus on, even with this last one you're talking about where if you put an RV in your driveway because your house has significant damage, we need to track that. You may need that information, and we're going to need that information. Some agency somewhere along the way, trust me, will want that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 229-22 to include waiving of permit fees for habitable structures.
And any time, place, and manner.
Any time, place, and manner.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the room.
No, I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, you can sit.
So we're waiving the time that they can have an RV to what? Is it 180 days?
180 days.
So we're waiving the time, the line. I don't see in here where it says 180 days.
Well, that's separate from the resolution you adopted earlier on the extent of the temporary permitting system. So it's consistent with what you adopted earlier in the meeting.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm reading this property, says the habitable structure emergency shall remain in effect for a period of 180 days.
Okay.
On the date of adoption of this resolution, unless earlier terminated or extended by city council. That's in Section Two.
But what the resolution does not currently do is waive the permit requirements or the any time, place, or manner restrictions on the temporary habitable structures. But the amendment is doing that.
Does do that, yeah.
What the resolution is currently providing is the waiver of the permit and the waiver of the time, place, and manner for the temporary storage containers. It will continue to do that. They're both for 180 days unless terminated earlier or extended by the council. There's still a two, Councilmember Tate's motion.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Fire Chief Land would like to weigh in on this topic.
Okay, Chief Land?
Public Office trailer for yacht club, the condition was operational.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Mason? I see you standing up.
I'm standing, I'm just standing there.
I presume you were holding Chief Land's hand?
We're holding each other up.
You guys holding each other up?
Yeah, we're holding each other up.
So if I may ask a quick clarification, does the motion currently, is it waiving the permit requirement?
It's waiving the requirement for the temporary storage containers and the habitable structures and the permit fees, correct?
Well, you're waiving the permit requirements. You waived the permit fees.
Right, right.
In an earlier, in an earlier resolution.
Right.
Okay, so we're saying, no, if you want to have a RV, you do not need a permit, correct?
Correct.
For up to 180 days.
Correct.
Okay, clear on that.
And you don't, there's any, I don't know if you understand that, even if it has any time, place, or manner restrictions, they're waiving that too.
Correct. I need again to confer with our advisors that that is okay. We don't need that for tracking purposes. Correct? I'm getting a nod?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yes, Chief Ryan?
I'm ordering this trailer right now. The yacht club we're hearing is pretty well-impacted into that area. The Art Center was a recommendation of an area that's still down in that area, not as impacted, has good services. Is that acceptable?
Tony Wizina Center's not, okay, is that...
That void area is...
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay. It's closer. At least it's closer, yeah.
We can't use Chester Street because Chester Street's sustained damage, so we're going to have to bring in a...
Yeah. As close as you can get. That's good. Quonado's a good location.
The Art Center.
Yeah, that's it.
So, yeah, for tracking purposes, we have no objections to the waiver of the fee altogether.
Okay, perfect.
Waiver of the permit.
Waiver of the permit.
One other question, then. If we're not requiring someone to bring a habitable structure with a permit, does that cause any fire issues if someone, like, you know, having a permit at least you know that there is a tiny house or an RV, but it doesn't make a difference? Okay.
Now, bear in mind, this is going to have the same provision as for the storage containers, which is if you, they can only be located, they are pursuant to all these waivers, for 180 days unless terminated earlier or extended by the council. That means if I drive my RV up on day 179 and now decide that I need to live in it for whatever reason, and people don't extend it beyond 180 days, and they've only got that one day, and then people are going to start technically enforcing against them. The reason for that is because in addition to tracking these things for FEMA or whatever we're tracking them for, the city is not changing its regulations concerning these things. So a year from now, I don't think you expect, unless there's still a state of emergency, you don't expect to find the habitable structures and the storage containers still there just willy-nilly. Okay? Because you're trying to do this related to the emergencies that we've got going on right now. That's part of the reason for this being written the way that it is.
Council, have any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the floor.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costas.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to seven F, discussion of emergency policies and procedures following the hurricane Ian event. Presentation by the Dolphins.
That's basically what we just gave.
Okay, we've moved on. All right. Any other, Councilmember Shepherd?
We're getting, I'm sure other council members have been dealing with this. I'm getting a lot of people in my district calling me, even though with all the information that we put out on the internet, Facebook, and things like that, they don't say it, they don't hear it. They think that there's no communication. Are there electronic billboards available that we can rent and put on the road, like Chiquita, Del Prado, that people can read information as they drive by? I think that would be helpful. It's just an idea. I don't know if it's something that would be helpful.
I don't know. We will look into it. I will tell you that we've heard that feedback that there are folks that are not getting the word. We've expanded our efforts to include radio. Actually, today, we started deploying what we're referring to. Ms. Bice, what's the official term for them now? The SOS team or SOS squads, where we've gotten these quick-response vehicles that are going into the neighborhood with the fire inspectors, code enforcement personnel, they're ferrying supplies. They're going to be joined, I think, tomorrow by the American Red Cross. So we're bringing our employees' supplies and information to the neighborhoods rather than having folks seek information through some sort of means, and I'm hoping that that is a more proactive way of getting the information to the neighborhoods. Ms. Bice, if you want to add something?
Yeah, if you'd like me to expand a little bit about what we have done. In addition to the traditional methods like social media, our website, media partners, most have been speaking to the radio stations every day on updates, yeah, on five different radio stations. We've been in contact with them, see if messaging can go there. We haven't gotten confirmation from them yet. Traffic, the PD is utilizing their traffic sign, electronic signs. If anyone has seen it, you'll see the curfew message, but you'll also see call 311 for hurricane info. We're utilizing the new sign once we've got power, the sign in front of City Hall. All of the fire stations, with the exception of Station 10, has mini information resource centers for people who walk up. That's also happening at the PD and the fire department. So we're utilizing a lot of different methods to get the message out, and we completely understand that a lot of people, you know, may not be able to load certain things because of cell phone and internet connectivity, but we're reaching a lot of different people in many different ways.
Okay. Anything else?
Do we have a motion that we're running?
No.
No.
No, we're at the end. I was giving the counsel a...
You get the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
So council, what I'd like to do is, once we get back into the regular flow of business, what I want to do is take the water quality update off of your agenda for a while. I'd like to hold off on the intergov presentation for just a little bit, and then I'll put on an item for, as under old business, just where we are with hurricane recovery for the next foreseeable future. But in terms of intergov, I just want to let you know that that is not on hold. We are moving forward, and so the game plan is that we will go live with intergov 2021 on Wednesday.
All right. Time and place of the future meeting, regular meeting of Kib Korl City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, October 12, beginning at 4:30 PM in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.